All this meeting to order. First, before we get going, I'm going to introduce our new town manager, Steve Dowling. Everyone. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Hope you have a long and prosperous career with us. Our next order of business is this is a special meeting of council regarding the official plan update. Held under the provisions of sections 21 of the planning act. The act requires counsel to hold a special meeting to provide an opportunity for all property owners, residents and business owners in town, an opportunity to speak directly to counsel about the future of the community. The official plan sets out policies for the future development of the town. It describes how land will be used, how roads and other services will be provided, and establishes a strategy for community development for 20 years. An informal open house session was held November the 4th, 2021 to provide an opportunity for participants to express their opinion on these matters. This meeting is a formal meeting of council and it will be taken to provide a record of the comments received. I will ask the town's planning consultant, Mr. Jim Diamond, to provide a brief presentation. I will then ask those attending the meeting live or virtually to provide their comments to counsel. Mr. Diamond, a short presentation, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I trust we're coming through okay and all is good. I asked that the moderator load up the very brief presentation that I've done. And while he's doing that, I would say thank you for everyone who is attending this meeting. The Planning Act requires that we hold a special meeting under section 21 when we're updating the official plan or doing a new official plan. And that's the meeting that we're holding tonight. If you can flip, John. The people always kind of ask initially, what is an official plan? And so briefly, it establishes future land use, transportation and servicing for the municipality. It guides counsel in making decisions about development parks and economic development, essentially anything related to land use or public services in the municipality. There's a part of an official plan that deals with community improvement, and that's a matter that enables the municipality to identify community improvement projects and actually provide financial assistance to property owners to improve their properties. That needs to be in the official plan. More recently, we've learned finally that we need to identify policies that protect the environment and provide for climate change, make sure the the community is resilient and deal with all of the things that we probably should have been dealing with for the last 50 years. And finally, the official plan set out a process, how you're going to change land use in the municipality. And I'll say that the changes to the land use can be complicated. And the official plan spells out what you have to do in order to change your zoning or change the official plan or how to create a lot or do an easement or something like that. I was retained by the municipality to update the official plan in the spring of 2021. My initial thoughts were looking at the official plan. It was intended to guide development in Cobalt till 2011, so it went till 10 years ago. It protected a population of 1,200, and that's about what the population is now. My other take on it is it's a very long and complicated document. It's no reason that, or no surprise to me that a lot of people don't refer to it when they're dealing with the future development of Cobalt. I can't sit down and read it and understand it perfectly clearly. It's not available in a digital format, so if you get a copy of it, it's a lengthy scan. And it's very memory intensive. And finally, it doesn't reflect current provincial policy, which is what the planning act requires the municipality to do. So my initial recommendations were that rather than update this old document to create a completely new official plan for the municipality, and we're well underway with doing that. John, if you can flip. One of the one of the first things that we we wanted to do is talk to people in the municipality about what was going on. I've worked all over Northern Ontario. I've worked in lots of small towns. I love small towns in Northern Ontario. That's part of the reason I'm doing this. So we met with staff and council to talk about what's going on. I did telephone interviews with about seven or eight people in town just to talk about the ways of the world, as I like to say, and find out what's going on and what they thought needed to be done. We did a open house. This is a slide from my last meeting, but that's okay. We did an open house on November the 4th where we invited people to come in. We had a great discussion, roundtable discussion. I was so happy to actually do a live meeting with live bodies in the room, and it was great. Today, we are doing a special council meeting in the council chambers, and this meeting is required under the Planning Act. I think it's a bit of a hangover from old planning days, but it requires council hold a special meeting so that you as members of the public can actually address council directly on what you think the official plan is. The open house we did was kind of an informal meeting. This is a formal meeting and notes will be taken and minutes will be taken. And so it forms a long-term record of what you said tonight. After this meeting, my marching orders are to start preparing a draft of initial plan, and I said I'm well underway already. And in the springtime, I will return to Cobalt and hopefully be able to hold another live public meeting and talk about the plan that we've drafted. In the interim, I will be reviewing a draft plan with council. There's another opportunity for a formal public meeting under the Planning Act, and that hopefully will be in June of next year. And then my hope is that council adopts a new official plan in August. And so that's kind of the schedule. Anytime before, between now and then, I welcome you to comment and provide input into this whole process. It should be a plan developed by the community, not developed by a consultant who doesn't live there and hasn't lived there for their entire life. Next slide, please. One of the things we've done now is to create new base mapping for the town of Cobalt, which is great. It's in a digital format. It can be shared with people. You can zoom in on the mapping and identify properties. If you're digitally savvy, you can measure distances and things so that when the official plan is done and as we go through the process, when it's released to the public, you'll be able to download the document and and read it on your computer or print it. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor and the CIO, I made a promise to you when we started this that we're going to keep it a short and sweet document. And I'm doing everything I possibly can to do that, but also to make it current and succinct for the needs of the town of Cobalt. Next slide. This map is current land use. I can send that to anybody whoever wants again now in a digital format that you can blow up. This is what the the land use is in the town according to the existing zoning on the property. And it's very interesting to look at. If you are attending this meeting and talking to people attending this meeting, I'd love you to have a look at this map and make sure that we have it right. It's hard to go into an area like this and make sure you've got everything right. And the historical records are not that good. So this is an important one to have a look at and make sure that we've got it right as we move forward in planning for the future land use, not just the current land use. And final slide. So this is your chance to have your say. Tell counsel what they should know. I have my pen out, my on my paper, and I will be listening to everything you say. Stay in touch with me. One of the beauties of of this project and projects like this that I've done is I can actually stay in touch with all of you. Here's my email address. It's the easiest one that I can think of, jim@municipalplanning.ca. You can also email cobalt@cobalt.ca. Hard to confuse those two things. And if you send me an email and ask me about something, I promise I will get back to you in about a day unless it's Friday afternoon. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to let members of the public attending the meeting have their say, and I will be keeping notes as they speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Diamond. I'm going to now ask participants who have joined us virtually to raise their hands if they wish to speak. Facilitator will allow them to speak as their hands go up. Do you see anyone there, John? That's yet? Okay, while we're waiting, then, is there anyone attending the meeting who wishes to speak? Hey, Dave. We get any John, we'll let them in as a Yes, please. Like they're restricted to maybe about 10 minutes, Dave, if you can. Just a second. Okay, we'll pick it up later. Just yeah, just leave it there. One of the girls will get it. Okay, we're ready to go.
At the first official plan workshop, there was support for arts and culture, mixed with history, initiatives to grow tourism, house them in town, and build a residential quality of life community. So let's imagine some future possibilities. The first poetry tour in 2012 was a success, earning the Civilian Southern Area Chamber of Commerce Hospitality Award. When the Northlander passenger train returned in 2024, thereabouts, Spring Paul's Poetry Festival leased the train car, picked up 30 poets and musicians in Toronto for another poetry tour. This time, there were options for staying in town, hopefully. Cobalt's mid-July summer streets have a hot body. Uskers play music as crowds pass the downtown core. A group riding rented e-bikes are off to see the Silver Trail. Local shops do a brisk business, setting up street stalls for those attending the Cobalt Rocks Music Festival. Friday and Saturday afternoon, local musicians performed in the Dr. Pollard Poetry Park. Charlie Angus and the Greasiest Angels Band headlines Friday night at the Miners Tavern. The festival ends Saturday night with a classic theater sold-out concert featuring the Jerry Band. A trend began with the COVID-19 pandemic when urbanites started to relocate northward. Hundreds over the years relocated to Cobalt since the town plan was created, fortifying the town's tax base. A phenomenon captured in author David Bridges' book, The Rise of the Rural Creative Class. For a whole chapter showcases the town's vibrant art-cultural community and its transplanted beauty prospectors, artists, musicians, writers, and filmmakers. In comparison, Cobalt's mining history and immense silver wealth are world-class and well-known. Its above-ground cultural tourism wealth attracted those who wished to experience this mining town's revitalized renaissance. Cobalt had an arts and residence program to encourage the creation of new works of art, help organize events, do workshops, be social media active, and visit local schools. Several decided to stay after their residency had ended, making Cobalt their permanent home. I've been recently contacted by the founder of the Ontario Poetry Society, Canada's largest poetry organization, for the location of the Canadian Poetry Emporium.
They got somebody who's going to
Cobalt is Canada's small-town poetry capital. And I haven't got time. It would take two hours for me to explain all those advantages, but anyway. It's being considered with some seed funding and a donation of a 3,000-horse poetry collection for a space for year-round literary events, workshops, library, and art gallery, and multi-purpose art center. The Cobalt train station was sold and a new cafe opened in the most elegant event space in Northern Ontario. Wedding, celebration of life ceremonies, company parties, and small conferences enjoyed this deo-gothic landmarked historic capyons. Cobalt hosted the Global Murals Conference. Old murals were restored and new ones were painted from Cobalt's vast heritage database. One paid homage to a group of seven artists, Franklin Carmichael and A.Y. Jackson, painting in the 1930s, plus friends Frederick Banton, Jevon McKay Hauser, and several of her women friends. The above artists and locals were represented on 10 historic art plots, primarily downtown, making for a unique cultural infrastructure out of nowhere in the north. Plans are for the most extensive retrospective of Canadian mining paintings using up to 300 paintings using 15 venues in Cobalt and Haila River. A week festival celebrating Cobalt through the eyes of artists, walking tours, lectures, and exhibitions. The concrete wall crossing the train station became a story map. The first mural with indigenous artists showed how 2,000 years ago, silver was harvested and traded on Cobalt, which initially had an Algonquin name, translated as "the lake with the soft rock which can be written upon." It was the first discovery of silver mined by indigenous peoples in Canada. Accommodation for residents and visitors were a key challenge. The town realized it needed to have some skin in the game. Bylaws were tweaked to allow more homestay alternatives. A once-seasonal camper trailer park was converted into a tiny home park beside the Golden Age Club. The town collected rents and invested in two of their own that became tourist season options and later were rented to students at Northern College. The Cobalt Public School property ownership was finally resolved, and a local home building company developed it. Empty home lots in town were given an incentive of receiving 90% of their purchase price if built within two years. Another northern town used this incentive as part of its community improvement plan. And I have the link that I'll be giving Jim for that community in Northern Ontario with much more details. For instance, if the lot was $5,000, if they built within two years, they would get $4,000 or $5,000 back. But that zero tax-based lot would bring, you know, revenue into the town and tell me to get it back within a few years. Several historic buildings were also repurposed for accommodation redevelopment and not torn down unless structurally unsafe. In Cobalt, the future always has radiant roots in the past. And here's an excerpt, a final verse of a poem written by E.C. Hunter in the 1925 Botarian Magazine. Where the North begins. "The north is not a country measured in terms of land. The real north is a spirit that you must understand. We living in the north represent this understanding. Now it's time to share the story of Cobalt, its first silver city, played a pivotal role in developing the past north. And today, it's passionately poised to welcome newcomers and visitors to mine a motherload of creative opportunities to live a life and then some."
Thank you very much, Mr. Bridges. Yeah, we'll just pick that up. Just leave it on the desk, and we'll get it later. Thank you very much. Mr. Moderator, has anybody joined us virtually that would like to ask a question? See you in none. Okay, Mr. Diamond, would you like to say something in response to Mr. Bridges' comments?
Thanks. I always appreciate what Mr. Richards has to say. We had a great conversation at our meeting in early November. And I've been keeping copious notes. And I will do what I can to make that happen, dealing with your official plan. I appreciate, I appreciate everything. I will say, Mr. Mayor, in my brief time in Cobalt, I probably spent three days there since I started working on this project. I can see where Mr. Richardson's coming from. And there is tremendous opportunity that we just have to figure out how to capitalize on. So thanks very much for the comments.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, still no one? Okay, and we'll have to proceed. I have a draft motion here. Be resolved that any and all comments and submissions will be accepted for consideration, and that the presentation by consulting planner be accepted. A mover and a seconder, please. Matt and Joe. No discussion on the issue. All in favor? Can't see Doug and the rest of them. Assuming they all all in favor. Okay, item six, confirmation bylaw. Be resolved that bylaw number 2021-37 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council incorporate the town of Cobalt under section 21 of the Planning Act, RSO 1990, seat 13, as amended, be taken as read a first, second, and a third time and finally passed 23rd day of November 2021. And further, that said bylaw will be signed by the mayor and heard and recorded in the bylaw. Over in a seconder. Pat and Joe. All in favor? Okay, adjournment. Be it resolved that the special meeting of council be adjourned at let's see here, 6:52. Mover. Matt and Pat. All in favor? Is there a way we can change this so I can see the other three counselors?
If I may, George, I didn't realize you couldn't see us. I've been throwing my hand in the air for a few times. But chiefly, I just wanted to thank Mr. Diamond for his presentation. And I would ask that the materials he has available to be sent out to everyone, the land use maps, that kind of thing, before it to members of council. They would be awfully useful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I hope to have a full background report done and the first draft of the official plan for council's review by the end of the first week of December.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we're going to now move into our regular meeting of council. All this meeting to order. This George, disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Matt, your worship. Item 12-1. Okay, and Joe. Thank you, attending. Okay. Item three, approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Go ahead, Doug.
I had asked for a closed session after this meeting. Is that ready to go? I understood a motion was already prepared.
Yes, it is.
Okay, long as we're going to get to it.
Okay, we pass the motion when we get to the closed session. Okay, Doug?
Yep.
Good. Okay, then we'll have to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Be resolved that council approved the agenda of the regular meeting dated November 23rd as amended. A mover and a seconder, please. Doug and Bill. Any discussion? We've already had the discussion on it. All in favor? Harry. Approval of the minutes. Be a result that council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular minutes of council, November the 2nd, 2021. A mover and a seconder, please. Pat and Doug, Bill. Any, any discussion on the minutes? Any errors or missions? All in favor? Harry, thank you. Are there any business arising from the minutes? No inquiries from the general public, no delegations and presentations. Obviously, no business arising from that. Staff and committee reports, 9.1 Public Works. Everyone had an opportunity to look at it? Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Bill. Can't hear you, Bill.
My apologies, your worship, and through you. My question is just a question. Where are we buying our winter sand this year? You know? Does anybody know?
I can't answer that question for you right now, but we can get you that answer in the morning, I would believe.
Thank you.
The Works Department guys take care of that themselves. So we can, we'll find out and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? What the Public Works? Joe?
The building expected to arrive.
Okay, I can probably answer that one. It's very, in the very near future. The base has been, base has been born. The islands are all in. The building, I'm told, is on its way. I don't know that for a fact. I haven't seen it, but that's my bill. But again, we can talk to Dave in the morning and find out for sure what where it's available. I encourage everyone to go down and take a look. It's, the pad is very nice. It's going to be a good-sized building. Well done. So far, so good. Any other questions, comments? And violent enforcement? Questions on the violent enforcement? Done. Police department. Okay. Be a result that council accept the staff committee reports as presented. A mover and a seconder. Matt. And Bill. All in favor? Items for council direction, 10.1 Holiday Schedule for Approval. Be a result, be a result that council accept the proposed holiday schedule for 2021 and 2022. Over in a seconder. Matt or Pat? Pat and Joe. Is there any discussion? On the item, go ahead, Doug. That area.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was wondering what the previous practice has been in these holidays. I note that we're closing the office for 12 consecutive days at the end of December, early January, and I'm just wondering, is that in accordance with what we have done previously?
To the best of my knowledge, it is. It's very close to. Depending on where Christmas and New Year's fall, it's very, very close to what's always been done. That answer your question, Doug? Are you?
Oh, yeah, I'm just mulling it over now.
Yeah. Bill?
Yes, true, your worship. I'm not against anybody taking holidays. They're well deserved. However, I have a concern when we're out of the office for 12 days. And I expect that Public Works won't be working. Is there somebody on call? For emergencies?
Public Works will be on call 24/7.
Okay.
They have a phone that they have to call. They do their winter snow removal.
Okay. But I mean, if somebody calls in the office saying they have an issue, whatever, where would the call go to? Could be like, say, a bylaw issue or something?
The call would go to our town manager.
So he's on call?
I believe so, yes.
Would Steve like to comment on that?
Yes, he checks in periodically. We're all messages.
Yeah. And I also get my fair share of calls, so I know where Steve lives. Any other questions? Okay. Be a result that council accept the proposed holiday schedule for 2021, 22. All, one second, all in favor? Matt and Angela. All in favor? Harry. Report on reopening the municipal office to the public. Be it resolved that council accept the report recommendations that will allow for continuing access by appointments following established COVID-19 protocol, and that the decision to reopen the office will be reviewed again in March of 2022. As a municipal office cannot provide two-meter physical distancing options at present. A mover and a seconder. Pat and Joe. Discussion. Joe?
I think it should remain closed, especially with the number of cases going up right now.
Okay. Doug, Doug, Bill.
Thank you. Through you, through you. Thank you. Through you, through your worship, yes, I agree with Counselor Dubey. With the way things are going right now, I think it's better to keep it closed.
Anyone? Doug?
Yeah, I certainly want to second Joe and Bill's comments. It's, we live in extraordinary times, and I think sometimes we have to take extraordinary measures, and protecting the safety of our office staff and the workings of our town are certainly important items. I'm not too fussy about making it to the end of March, per se, because we might want to see where this wave actually either dies out or explodes, one or the other. But I would hope that we'd be able to review it on an ongoing basis, so that we'll, and I'll find definitively review it in March, but keep an eye on it and make sure we continue to not necessarily need to keep it closed.
Yeah, absolutely, and this is changing on basically a daily basis right now. We don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring, so I think daring on the side of caution is a very good idea. Anymore? Matt?
Yeah, I'm fully in favor of keeping it closed, and just listen aside. Number two, the amount owing taxes water sewer. Did you notice that in 2020, the amount owing to us were less than in 2019? And this is while we were closed, and people are paying up very well, so that's just kind of jumped out on me.
No, very good comment, very good, very good catch there, because we have been doing very well and are a gun foreseeable, and like you said, better than most, I think.
Yeah.
No more comments? All in favor? Harry? Ten point three, set schedule for re-establishment of the committee of the whole meeting process. Be it resolved that council re-establish committee of the whole meeting process. Committee meeting will be the first Tuesday of every month, and a regular council meeting will be the third Tuesday of every month. So our first meeting would be, committee of the whole would be December the seventh. Our general meeting would be, a regular council meeting would be December the twenty-first. Now, on the December the seventh meeting, we'll have to be discussing as to what we're gonna do in November because of the way the staff is coming back to work. It's the day before our next committee of the whole meeting, so we'll have to discuss that at the next committee of the whole meeting. Okay? A mover and a seconder? Doug and Bill? Discussion? All in favor? Harry? Ten point four, council to consider partnering with OPP in the SCRAM project that allows for sharing security videos in the event of a possible crime. Be it resolved that the town partners with the OPP and promotes community partnership that allows for voluntary sharing of security videos for the investigations of wrongdoings. A mover and a seconder? Matt and Pat? Discussion? Go ahead, Matt.
Your worship, although not in this full capacity, our building in purchasing it, we put in a significant security system. Multiple cameras throughout the exterior to monitor the property as well as inside, and we have helped the OPP on numerous occasions with our security systems alone. I believe that this is something that can benefit our area and is like the new age community producing project. That's the way it's presented by the OPP, and I think that's going to be a benefit to our town because there are a lot of properties in town who have significant systems installed in them as well, so absolutely.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Doug.
I would note, in addition to the comments made here about communities that are currently doing it, there's been a number of reports in the news about significant successes with this program in helping to alleviate crime and other kinds of problems. So I'm very happy to endorse it, and I think we should just get right on it.
Okay. Bill?
Through you, your worship, I second Counselor Wilcox and Counselor Johnson. I think it's a great idea. Anything that we can help the OPP to reduce crime in our little town would certainly benefit us. I'm one hundred percent behind the idea.
For sure. Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Harry? Ten point five, training opportunities for counselors and head of council available. Be resolved that the town of Cobalt promotes training opportunities for both internal and on our website for anyone considering running for election next fall. A mover and a seconder? Doug and Matt? Discussion? All in, go ahead, Angela.
I think it's a great opportunity for anybody who's thinking of running, especially anybody who hasn't sat on council, because what's involved is not what you think's involved when you first take a kick at the skin, as I found out.
Any other comments? All in favor? Harry? Items for council information, eleven is bylaws. We have none. Twelve is general business. Twelve point one, schedule of accounts. Counselor Johnson and Counselor Dubey will leave as they have your near interest. Be a result that council receive the following schedule as presented. Schedule number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one in the amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. A mover and a seconder? Please. Bill and Angela? Any discussion on it? All in favor? Harry? Okay, we'll get the two gentlemen back in here. Thirteen motions for which prior notice has been given. We have none. Mayor's report, nothing to report. No notice of motion. Council updates, Council Wilcox and Ed said we'll give an update on contract negotiations for the town.
Uh, thank my
Yeah, you're on.
Yep, yep, I am. Thank you, your worship. Uh, just a quick comment, just to let everyone know that the town has entered into negotiations with QP, our local union. We have had one meeting with them to date, and we'll be meeting with them again near the end of January. The pause is brought in part because of COVID and the upswings, in part because of information that we need to gather to continue our talks. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Any questions from counselors or anything? Nothing? Okay, we're gonna go into closed session. Now, I just want to comment, anyone viewing will be placed in an online waiting room and readmitted after we come out of the closed session. Do you want to stay where you are? And we need a motion to go in. Go ahead, Doug.
Oh, I was just gonna move the motion.
Oh, okay, I gotta read it, okay?
Oh, sir, I didn't mean to rush you. Gosh.
Okay, well, I don't, you know, I like to be rushed. Feels like I'm at home. Be a result that council convene in closed session as per section two thirty-nine of the municipal act one, two thousand and one, as amended in order to address the matter pertaining to subsection labor relations of employees negotiations. Over in a seconder, Doug? And Matt? Okay. All in favor? Harry? Thank you, folks. Item twenty, confirmation bylaw. Be a result that bylaw number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight be a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of Cobalt taken as read a first, a second, and a third time, and finally passed this twenty-third day of November, 2021. And further, that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and recorded in the bylaw book. A mover and a seconder? Bill and Pat? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Item twenty-one, be a result that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at seven twenty-three. A mover and a seconder? Matt and Joe? All in favor? Thank you very much, folks, and our next committee of the whole meeting will be January, and we're gonna get back to the regular format.
I thought December, George.
Hey?
December.
December, did I say?
You said January.
Okay.
Wishful thinking.